I will call to order this meeting of the Select Board on August 1st, 2023 at 6:01 PM. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. And I believe Mr. Kevin Hurtel is recording the meeting? Is anyone else recording the meeting? Okay, seeing none. I will note for the record participating this evening are myself, Liz Klein, Chair, and Joe Fisher. If you're willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. I know we had some last-minute changes. You ready?
Yep, I am.
All right.
So I will move to approve the minutes dated July 25th, 2023.
Second roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an ayes, well, passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is a bear update from Hingham's Animal Control Officer, Leslie Badger. Thank you for joining us. I know you've been quite busy.
Absolutely, no problem. Yes, it's been a busy 24 hours. The bear has revisited Hingham. It was here at the beginning of the summer, along with other South Shore towns. It came back yesterday in the South Hingham area due to how things went the first time around, not only in Hingham but in other surrounding towns. We're approaching things a little bit differently from the mass fishing game and environmental police. So that's why we've kept things a little bit more off of social media, and the reason for that is because with the first time around, and we're still seeing it, but not as in big numbers, we have people showing up, not only just from the Hingham area, but from areas all over. Not only they showing up, they're getting out of their vehicles, they're going on people's property, they're actually trying to walk up to the bear. We've had incidents where it's happened to me personally and officers in other towns where they follow the cruisers. And I know in another town, the cruisers were responding to another call, and they had people following them. So it was made the policy that unless it is a serious safety situation, we're not disclosing on social media except for it's in South Hingham or North Hingham, instead of the exact location, to try and minimize that, because not only for the bear's safety or other concern and main concern, it's for human safety as well, and the fact that we don't want people going into other people's private property and disturbing their peace. It's one thing to have the bear come through, it's another thing to have people you don't even know coming through. So it's not something that we don't want people to know, or we're not trying to be safe. We care very much. Another thing that I am doing, I'm out there, I've been out there pretty much almost 24/7, and I'm making sure that I try and stay ahead of the bear. Before I came to the meeting, I was at the Scarlet Oak, talking to management. So I'm personally going to, whether it's businesses, restaurants, the schools, talking to SROs, the churches, and individual people that I know live on the streets that it's been seen on, I try and get to those ahead of time. And most streets and neighborhoods have neighborhood threads or emails, and when I speak to them, they're letting their neighbors know, hey, the ACO is here, this what's going on, so it's getting out that way, versus the whole town on the social media wide. And we're doing it that way. So like with Scarlet Oak, I let them know, and then that way they have a heads up, it's not at Scarlet Oak, but I gave them a heads up, hey, you know, it's within so many miles, I just wanted you to have the heads up, I know you have diners outside. So I make sure they're aware, you can start your planning, I did it last night as well, you can start your planning. That way, if for some reason you do see it and people become concerned, you have that plan in place, what you want to do. And then you can always call us, we'll come right out and help with whatever you need or usher it along. And that brings me to the next part. With the bear, again, the environmental police and the mass fishing game, their policy as of right now is that they feel that it is not uncommon for bears to be in Massachusetts. It is new for them to be coming this way, but they feel that they should be allowed to coexist, that they should be able to move along, and that at this time, they have no plans to trap and relocate for any reason unless it is a serious, serious threat going on to the bear or to the public. And it has to be something that is a serious, serious threat, not just that it's a bear and it's here. And they've made that very clear to us, because we've reached out at different times, because we're always checking in to let them know, hey, the bear's here, this is going on, so they have an update, and they made it very clear, great, continue what you're doing. And again, if there's a serious, serious threat, then we will make plans to do so. But at this time, they have not, in any of the towns, made an attempt to trap, relocate, or anything like that. So they have no plans as of yet unless, again, we have a serious situation that comes up. The most important things that I try and stress to people, and we'll try and get more educational stuff out, is again, bird feeders, compost piles, gardens, fruit trees, those are the things that attract bears. Everyone thinks meat bears, they're going to want to attack, they want to eat meat. Black bears, meat isn't really their thing. They like fish, they like crabs, and as I stated, the fruit trees, compost piles, those are the things that they like. They don't really go for meat. They are not known, black bears are not known to want to attack anyone unless they are threatened and cornered, and they have no way to escape, or they have young with them is the only time that I've been made aware of by mass fishing game, that they will turn, stand up, roar, and try and advance towards. But as long as enough space is given, they keep their distance and they just continue. And that's what's been happening all over the South Shore for this last month and a half that the bears have been on the South Shore and so far in Hingham. They have been just kind of, or this one has been just moseying around and not bothering anyone. It has taken a dip in a pool today. I was out there really quickly with fellow officers.
Thank you.
And I made a decision, no one was outside, I do want to clear up, because there's different rumors, no one was outside, no one was in the pool, it was a quiet backyard, there were children that were home alone, but they were safe, they were of ages that they could be home alone, they were never in any kind of threat, it never went up to the house, it came over the fence, and it went right into the pool, and was swimming around, having a great time, it even was courteous to pull the pool filter out. And then I decided to go for another dip after it did that. But as soon as I walked out, I made my presence known, I walked out and yelled to it, and immediately realized I was there, and then I started clapping my hands and yelling, it got right out of the pool, and it went the opposite direction of me, and it took off and went over the fence and back out of the yard, and then continued on. And each time I've seen it, it has continued to want to stay away from me, it has had no interest in wanting me to be near it or anything to do with it. So I do not at this time, nor does environmental, or any of the other ACOs that I've been working hand-in-hand with, because we're all in communication with each other, following it where it goes, have had any concerns of it being a threat to any of the public safety at this time.
Excellent.
So hopefully that answers questions?
Yes.
If you have any others, feel free.
Yes, well, thank you. Thank you so much for all you've done to keep us safe.
Absolutely.
What should people do if they see the bear on their property?
That's a great question. So the first and foremost, you see the bear, feel free, it's totally okay to enjoy that moment, let it pass through, keep your distance, stay in your house, that's the best thing, there's no need to interact with it, there's no need to go outside with it, just leave it be, keep the distance, and it's probably going to move on fairly quickly. If there's a food source in your yard, you can bang on the window, yell, scream to get it to continue to move on, so that way it doesn't want to stay there too long, or remember that place and want to come back if it's in search of food and staying nearby. So those are important things to do. Again, people are more than welcome, if it is a sighting and they want us to know, they can call our business line anytime. I will come out, or an officer, if I'm not available, will come out, will check the area, make sure everything's okay, alert people, and let them know what's going on. Otherwise, if it's an emergency that they feel there's a threat, they call 911, and we'll come out immediately. And we try and stay on top of it, like I said, if we know it's going near a school, within certain miles of a school, I'm calling right away, I'm letting, like I said, letting businesses know if I see people jogging. I had a mom walking an infant with a stroller, I walked with her all the way home and made sure they got home safely, and then about 30 minutes later, the bear came through their yard.
Okay.
And they were on Main Street. So I am proactively trying to make sure that I speak to anyone, everyone that's out there. So we're not, by any means, not telling people and just like, eh, whatever, we're trying to do it as the state is asking us to, a little bit quieter, and keeping to that select area it is in.
Okay.
But again, if it's truly a threat, we will make it, everyone aware at that point.
Sure, excellent. Have you been communicating with Linden Ponds or any of the senior living facilities?
Yes, so yesterday, we thought there was a chance that it may go to Linden Ponds or Black Rock Community, so we made sure to reach out to them right away, their security teams knew, they put out general emails to all the residents. So a lot of them were reaching out to me, and I had did pass-throughs myself yesterday evening, just to make sure everything was okay, but then it changed its direction, and now has gone a completely different route, so it's not near that area at the moment.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Joe, do you have any questions?
I do have a couple of questions. Do you know how old the bear is, because it might not qualify for Linden Pond?
He definitely doesn't, he or she, we've been saying he, because everything it's doing is very characteristic of a male bear.
Yep.
And we believe this is a male bear that's a juvenile, so it could be anywhere from a year up to two, possibly three years old, but we're at this point feeling, talking with the different ACOs and environmental police and mass fishing game, we think it's between a year to two years old.
And you mentioned a phone number people should call, not the 911, but for you, what is that number?
If they want to call the non-business line?
Yeah.
That is the 781.
Yep.
749-1212.
Okay. Any particular extension, or they just?
They can hit option zero.
Okay.
And that will get right to the dispatchers. But again, if they feel it is life-threatening, they can call 911, and that will get to us just as quickly.
And any guidance for residents who have pets, particularly dogs or cats?
So that is another great question. As of right now, knock on wood, I have had no community that has, talking to the other ACOs that had any issues. Cohasset did have an interaction where it was a Great Pyrenees and the bear, and the bear just stood there, and the Great Pyrenees was barking, and its tail was wagging, and it was getting closer and closer, and the bear just stood there and looked at it like, I don't have any interest wanting to have anything to do with you.
Yep.
So even though that happened, and the reason I'm bringing that up is, thank goodness, nothing happened, but I do not encourage that anyone allow their dogs to have an interaction. Thankfully, the bear is very calm and docile and has been that way, but in the off-chance one dog gets right on top of or interacts with or tries to go after, the bear's going to react. So the best thing you can do is make sure you're always watching your pet, if you're taking them out to go to the bathroom, and you check the area and you see there's nothing there, if their dog or cat's able to go out of your sight, just make sure you can kind of keep it in your sight, or like a long line, something like that, if you know that if your neighbors have told you or me, you've seen me in the area, that it's in the area, just to make sure to do that, to clear your whole yard before you let them out, so they don't have that close interaction. But other than that, they've been, it has not had any interaction, and they normally don't, because they're not really interested in wanting to attack and eat meat, so that interaction, like the concerns we'd have with a coyote.
Sure.
It's completely different, believe it or not, with a black bear. If we had grizzly bears, then there would be more of a concern in that sense. Also, another note of mention, a couple other towns have had chicken coops, and it's only gone for the grain, and it has avoided the chickens, and the chickens have been free-roaming, there's been turkeys in yards, and it's walked literally right through the whole group of, didn't even care, didn't stop to look at them, just moseyed on, ate some of the grain and continued on. Same thing with Barnes, the Barnes in Hingham are aware of, let them all know, the other towns have reported the same thing, they've either, he's either just, he or she has either just passed through, or if grain was left out or some fruit, it would just eat the grain or fruit, never have gone near the animals and just continued on.
Do you have a schedule of sporting events that are going on in town, so that you can alert the teams?
So I do not, but what I've been doing is reaching out to SROs, the school staff directly, and they've been keeping me updated on what events are happening on the school fields in those areas. So I've been checking in with those, but I will check in with like private sports teams too, that may not get the information from the schools themselves.
So Tom, who would be the best person for fields, because it wouldn't necessarily be the schools?
Yeah, Mark Thoreau, the Rec. Department, will have connections with all the different private sport or athletic agencies.
Yep. And is it your practice that you'll let neighborhoods know if the bear's in the area, so that we'll be on guard for our pets, for example?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
So I have made the point to go, so like today and yesterday, I've been in the neighborhoods, patrolling all around, anyone I see out, whether it's someone doing work on someone's house, someone jogging, or it's someone that I may or may not know, but I see them there in the backyard, I'm stopping, I'm saying, hey, how are you, what's going on, I just wanted to let you know there's a bear, feel free to pass it on to your neighbors, we're kind of keeping it a little bit quieter, because we've had some people, and then they'd see a couple carloads go by me, and I'm like, and there you go, because they'd stop, roll down the window, say, is the bear here? And I'm like, nope, it's not, you know, you can continue on, so, yep.
And how long has the bear been in Hingham?
It's been about 24 hours now. So it arrived yesterday, late morning, early afternoon, so it's been here about 24 hours.
Great, thank you, no other questions.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments from members of the public? I don't see anybody, do you, Michelle? Okay, all right, thank you.
I see a bear raising their hand.
All right, thank you, Leslie. We appreciate you being here.
No problem, hope you have a great evening.
Thanks, Leslie.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, next on the agenda is to consider approval of the request of Bertucci's Restaurants LLC, 9D Derby Street, for a change of manager. Do you have Sandro De Cruz with us?
I don't see them.
Let's see.
Two other folks just dropped off, and I don't see.
Okay.
Are we expecting them here?
We were, right?
Yeah.
Okay, should we move on?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, we'll come back to that. All right, next on the agenda is the proclamation for Veterans Suicide Awareness and Remembrance Day.
Yeah.
Keith German, if you want to join us, and I believe we have Kevin Hurtel, the founder of the SAR Flag Corporation with us on Zoom.
Can you guys hear me, okay?
Yes. Thank you for joining.
Thank you. Keith, did you want to start off?
Sure, thank, thank you. I'll be speaking tonight as your Director of Veteran Services, as well as the Regional Director for the SAR Flag Incorporated. SAR stands for Suicide Awareness and Remembrance. So I want to thank you, Madam Chair, and the other members of the board and the current administration that took this bold step, this very courageous act, to help us facilitate the proclamation of National Suicide Awareness and Remembrance Day, which is currently targeted for September 22nd. Our hope and goal is to have this made a national day of recognition. This is a grassroots evolution, and why did I say you're courageous is because by starting here, as we know, Massachusetts leads the nation in the delivery of military and veterans' benefits, and we're number one, and Hingham usually runs around the, you know, the top 10 of things that go on, for instance, our POW, MIA Chair, numerous other things that we've done as far as having legislation put forward to the great and general court. So by us acting, our members up on the Hill, Senator O'Connor, Joe Moschino, our representative, we're hoping to then have the other cities and towns, the other 350 fall in line, and eventually have this on Governor Healey's desk for signature, possibly as early as next year. So again, greatly appreciative of you for doing this. Conversely, deeply, deeply disappointed that the school committee chair and the superintendent did not take the similar action when asked to put this on their agenda. Why do I say that I'm deeply disappointed? Suicide is preventable, you don't have to be in the military or be a veteran, so it's a nationwide issue. It's actually a nationwide epidemic for men and women who have served or are in the military post 9/11. Approximately 8,000 deaths occurred in combat during the Global War on Terrorism, and as many as four times as much, so close to 30,000 suicides have also plagued us during that same time. So four times as many men and women who perhaps fought in those battles have chosen to take their own lives instead of perhaps getting the help that they so readily earned. So with that said, I'd like to just turn it over to Kevin, who is the President of the corporation, and let him speak if that's okay with the board.
Yes, please. Yes, please go ahead, Kevin, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, good evening, thank you for inviting me here today. I'm here to support the proposed proclamation for the annual observance of Veterans Suicide Awareness and Remembrance Day. My name is Kevin W. Hurtel, I'm an Air Force veteran, and I served during 9/11 as an F-16 Crew Chief. I'm the founder and President of the nonprofit named the Veterans Suicide Awareness and Remembrance Flag Corporation, what we call ourselves the SAR Flag Family. I'm the creator of the Suicide Awareness and Remembrance Flag, or SAR Flag, and originator of the observance named Veterans Suicide Awareness and Remembrance Day. My cousin, Senior Ensign Robert Dean, US Air Force, died by suicide in 2016, and it was at that time I became painfully aware of, the 22 a day. So I set out to find out why this was happening to our veterans and military, and what I could do about it. I then spent days, then months, then years, reading and researching military and veteran suicide. In my research, I found that there are nonprofits across the country doing God's work to not only serve, but to save our veterans and military, yet these suicides persist. I read that there are awareness campaigns, and more, like the Buddy Check, yet these suicides persist. I read that there was a 24-hour crisis lifeline, yet these suicides persist. These suicides persist because of the way in which we were trained in the military to downplay, dismiss, or diminish our mental health, thereby creating a stigma associated with it. That's when I decided to create a symbol to break the stigma, to unite nonprofits across our nation, working to combat veteran and military suicide, to honor and forever remember those lost in suicide, to change our perception, and to respect, honor, and unite their families. After a year of working on the design, that symbol became the Suicide Awareness and Remembrance Flag, or SAR Flag. The SAR Flag has been copyrighted at the Library of Congress, and now is in 38 states with veterans, families, VFWs, American Legion's, and more. Suicide is the number-one killer of veterans and military. We will lose more in one year to suicide than all of the casualties from Iraq and Afghanistan combined. The worst part of this loss is that according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, most, if not all, suicides preventable. There are nonprofits and government entities across our nation working to combat this epidemic, however, their services are vastly underutilized. This is due to the stigma that exists with mental health, suicide, and seeking treatment within our warrior culture that prevents those who are struggling from seeking treatment, which leads to a crisis, which then leads to death by suicide. And this is what happened a little over a year ago, with one of Hingham's own, Sergeant Matthew Partika, United States Marine Corps. The mission of the SAR Flag family is to break the stigma of mental health, suicide, and seeking treatment to facilitate prevention. The ways we do this is via public outreach, SAR Flag-raising and VSOs presenting SAR Flags to families who have lost, and conducting remembrance ceremonies to return honor to the life and service of our nation's warriors and defenders who died by suicide, and to remember those lost, and to unite their families who are currently ignored and forgotten by our country because of the way in which their family member died. We will be conducting a remembrance ceremony this Sunday in Hingham for Sergeant Partika, and we invite you all to attend. Veterans Suicide Awareness and Remembrance Day is a day to recognize, remember, and honor the veterans and military who died by suicide, as well as to honor, respect, and unite their families. It is a day to forever remember their lives and service to our nation. By having an annual observance, we elevate this issue in the public consciousness and raise our continued awareness. This encourages discussion about veteran suicide, thereby breaking the stigma associated with it, and by changing the perception and normalizing the otherwise taboo subject of mental health among veterans and active military, we allow them to seek out the treatment they need without fear of judgment, while simultaneously showing that we care as a state and nation to prevent living veterans and active military from dying by suicide. Veterans and active military continue to be at the greatest risk to die by suicide among the US population. They are two times as likely to die by suicide compared to their civilian counterparts, and an average of 20-plus veterans and active military die by suicide each day in the United States. We have lost over 100,000 to suicide since 2001. Suicide prevention services are vastly underutilized by veterans and military, and this is due to the stigma of mental health, suicide, and seeking treatment. Of the eligible veterans for VA health services, less than half use them, and of those who use them, even fewer seek out mental health services. We also know that even fewer active military seek out mental health treatment for suicide prevention services. Raising our continued awareness and breaking the stigma of suicide and mental health are key steps to preventing this unnecessary loss of life. That is why we call in the Town of Hingham to pass the proclamation to observe Veterans Suicide Awareness and Remembrance Day, so that we can honor and remember those lost, to change the perception, to raise our continued awareness, so that we can come together to prevent other families like mine, or the Partika family, from having to endure such a terrible loss. Please go to sarflag.org to learn more about our mission, and to support us in our endeavor to end veteran and military suicide. And I would like to now leave you with our motto. We honor, we remember, we will end veteran suicide together. Thank you for allowing me to speak here today.
Thank you, that was quite powerful. Thank you for your service, and I'm so sorry for the loss of your cousin. Thank you for joining tonight, and certainly your dedication and passion for this tragic cause. And Keith, thank you again for bringing this up, bringing it to our attention. You have been, I'm sure you've had interactions with, and have had the opportunity to work with Keith, he is a tremendous advocate for our veterans, and this is certainly a cause that we are all very passionate about. And as you mentioned, it's not just a national epidemic, but it has reached our community, and we're feeling it quite deeply, so thank you. I am glad that we are leaders in this. I am certainly passionate about breaking down the stigma of mental health. It's certainly something we are committed to as a board, and are working not only with veterans, but with all of our community members as best we can. So certainly support this and, you know, look forward to what the next steps are to get it in front of Governor Healey. Joe, do you have any comments?
Just to add my voice to yours, the stigma associated with mental health and suicide issues is not limited to the military, but I think you're leading the way, and by attempting to break the stigma, you'll help others, not limited to the military. Keith, could you comment a little bit about what events will be happening this weekend?
Sure. This Sunday on August 6th, at the Hingham Harbor Bandstand, at 11:00 AM, we will be holding the SAR, what we call the 9/22 Ceremony, and it will be in honor of the one-year anniversary, which was as close as we could get it, to avoid the holiday in July, for the Partika family. They will be escorted down 228 by a motorcycle procession, as was similar to when we brought Matthew home last year. They'll proceed down Main Street to North, I think, and then over to Hingham Harbor, where the Partikas will be met by members of the SAR team, there'll be a brief exchange of gratu-, you know, salutations, and then they'll be brought up onto the bandstand. We also have, to grace our presence, the singing trooper, for all those who may know, Sergeant Dan Clark, he's a pretty well-known person around these parts. He'll be singing our national anthem and Marine Corps hymn. There'll be a prayer by Colonel Philip Anderson in Matthew's honor, as well as some spoken words from our Brigadier General, who will be gracing our presence as well. He is what, he is the, I guess he's the kind of the, he's the face behind what we call Tough Ruck, and for those of you who don't know, Tough Ruck is a course where anybody can participate, you fill a rucksack, so a backpack with about 30 pounds, and you go the distance, if you can. And it's just to show, again, bring out that awareness to the national epidemic, which at its height was at 22 veterans and military members a day, is now around, they say, 17 and a half, the VA says, but. So that ceremony will be from 11 to 12, down at the harbor, everyone, the public is more than welcome. Afterwards, for those who are in the procession and the participants, will be a luncheon up at the Grand Army of the Republic Memorial Hall from 12:30 to 2:00.
So members of the public who want to participate should show up a little before 11.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Excellent. Should we read the proclamation?
Yeah, do you want me to do the first, three or four?
I should do the first four, then I'll finish. I should do the first four, then I'll finish.
Okay. Town of Hingham Veterans Suicide Awareness and Remembrance Day. Whereas the town of Hingham, Massachusetts recognizes the importance of honoring and supporting our brave veterans and military members who have selflessly served our nation with valor and dedication. And whereas it is with great concern that we acknowledge the alarming issue of veteran and military suicide, a deeply troubling and preventable tragedy that affects the lives of countless veterans, military members, and their families. And whereas it is our duty as a compassionate community to raise awareness about the mental health challenges faced by veterans and military members, including post-traumatic stress, depression, anxiety, and other related conditions that contribute to the issue of veteran and military suicide. And whereas the town of Hingham seeks to elevate this issue in the public consciousness and raise our continued awareness, which promotes open dialogue and understanding about mental health issues among veterans and military members, breaks down the stigma surrounding seeking help, and ensures that our veterans and military members have access to the necessary resources and support without judgment.
And whereas it is essential that we remember and honor those brave men and women who have tragically lost their lives to suicide, while expressing our unwavering commitment as a community, state, and nation to preventing further loss of life. And whereas we call upon all residents, businesses, schools, and community organizations to join together on this day to raise awareness about the mental health challenges faced by veterans and military members and to commemorate those service members who have lost their lives to suicide. Now therefore, we, Elizabeth F. Klein, Joseph M. Fisher, and William C. Ramsey, Select Board of the Town of Hingham, do hereby proclaim September 22nd, 2023, as Veterans Suicide Awareness and Remembrance Day in Hingham. Signed this first day of August, 2023. Signed by Elizabeth F. Klein Chair, Joseph M. Fisher, and William C. Ramsey.
So with that, I move to proclaim Friday, September 22nd, 2023, as Veterans Suicide Awareness and Remembrance Day in the Town of Hingham.
Second, roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
And I'm in as well. Passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have, so those of you who know me, when I usually come before you, I give you the bluff, right? The bottom line up front. So now I have what they call the alibi. So I've forgotten something and I need to add it. So I see that our Police Chief Jones is here in the audience tonight. For those of you who don't know, tonight is what they call National Night Out, and I wanted to thank him for inviting us, meaning myself, the veterans, and the VA. So the VA from Boston are out back, along with many other vendors and police demonstrations. But it was at, I think, the bequest of this board and then brought to fruition through Tom, Michelle, and Art, to set up the Hingham Wellness Coalition. So we are out there as well tonight in the public, along with our partners, in the VA, who kind of have the reins on this. And Joe was kind of right. It isn't a, it isn't just a military or veteran epidemic. It's a nationwide epidemic for everybody. And the VA just knows how to do it. They're doing it now. So they're kind of the role model for it. So we're out there with them, partnering with them tonight, and helping to break down that stigma just right outside behind this building right now, tonight. So I thank you all for being that brave and, you know, saying the words, because it's only when we say it out loud that we can put it to bed.
Agreed. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Are there any questions or comments for members of the public? Should have said that before we voted. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is to proclaim August 12th, 2023, as Farmers Market Day in the Town of Hingham. And we have Mark Collings joining us.
Hi, everybody. I'm Michelle. That's a hard act to follow. Kevin and Keith, listen carefully. It's happenstance that I'd be here tonight to hear this, but it's a moving tribute to people who have experienced the loss.
Yes.
I'm Mark Collings, 44 Spring Street. One of the people who helps run the market. And it is, next week is Farmers Market Week nationally. And as I've been here a number of years previously, I'm requesting that Hingham proclaim the week from Saturday as Hingham Farmers Market Day. Just to give you a little brief on the market, it's never been better. It is, we are in the correct place. Tom, you helped. Joe, you know, you all have been terrifically supportive. And the Station Street parking lot is where the market existed for I don't know how many years. It was registered with the Commonwealth in 1977, so we know that date as a matter of record. I have a poster that was given to me that someone found in an antique shop that is clearly long before 1977. So, and the market has been on Station Street for that long. So we're back and rocking. We're seeing between, we don't do a hard count. We don't, we don't know exactly how many people come every week, and it's weather-dependent, of course, seasonally-dependent. Right now, we're, Saturday will be our 14th market of the season, so that puts us just about halfway through. Everything's in. Corn, blueberries, tomatoes are coming out of our ears. And the people at the, at the start of the market at 9:00 a.m., we can have as many as 90 people lined up for the opening bell to come in and see our vendors and take advantage of local produce and locally-produced products. So we're quite proud, but it would not be in existence without the support of the town. And Chief Jones, you and your staff have been essential to this, too. Occasionally, we do have a car parked in the parking lot, and the dispatchers are kind and patient, but they, we do try to get the cars out of the footprint. There, we've had a couple of incidents of vandalism of the portable toilet, but they've been minor, and so we're in good shape. That's about it. But it's been, it's, as I say, we're very proud of the market and we're glad to be able to be here.
Excellent. Well, you should be proud of the market. It's, I love being there, seeing all the people and all the vendors, and it's a lot more than just produce.
No, it's the community.
Fish and chocolate and mead wine and lots of fun additions this year, too. So thank you for continuing it. I know it's a lot of work and a lot of organization to pull that off.
As I've told many, many people, I get far more from it than I put in.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do. Do you have any questions, Joe?
What is the schedule? How long will it be open at Station Street?
The market is open until the last Saturday before Thanksgiving. And then we'll take a month off and expect to go back to Wampatack State Park in January, February, and March. Already making plans, but I just filed for the application. It's August. Where is summer going?
Right, right.
So it really is a major contributor to the community, so we do appreciate all the work that you've done. Thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Supporting our local farmers, local businesses, and just seeing the community come together is so much fun. And often, there's live music, and it really is a nice community event.
We love seeing families, and we see them from all over the region, which is lovely. Just a couple of more things I'll parlay off of Keith that I didn't mention. We have a very active SNAP program, Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program, the federal program that supplanted food stamps. And thanks to a grant from the Fruit Center Marketplace, we are able to offer a generous grant. They gave us a generous grant that allows us to boost the ability of people who are SNAP participants to increase their purchasing power at the market. We're very proud of that, and we've seen it grow through the last several years. It's a very robust program now. And Hingham Institution for Savings has also been an annual supporter, helping to underwrite the fundamental costs of the market and keep our vendor fees low. So I did want to give them a shout-out in that program.
Yes, thank you. Yes, the SNAP program is wonderful. And certainly, thank you to the Fruit Center and Hingham Institute for Savings. They've been great supporters, I know. Any questions or comments from members of the public? All right. Do you want to--
Do the same.
Yep, okay. Start us off here.
Town of Hingham, Massachusetts proclamation. Whereas Her Excellency, Governor Mara T. Healey of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has proclaimed August 6th to 12th, 2023, to be Massachusetts Farmers Market Week. And whereas farmers' markets are essential to the vitality of Massachusetts farms and are part of the cultural tradition of the Commonwealth. And whereas the Commonwealth is home of 216 summer/fall farmers' markets, which create a festive, open-air setting, which enhances community spirit and civic pride by offering a natural place for community gathering. And whereas farmers' markets help heighten public awareness of the agricultural diversity of Massachusetts and the benefits of buying local and preserving open space.
And whereas it is befitting for the citizens of Hingham to recognize the continued contribution of farmers' markets to local consumers, as well as their positive impact on the economy of the Commonwealth. And whereas Hingham's tradition of its farmers' market, now in its 45th season, makes it the third oldest in the Commonwealth. Now therefore, we, Elizabeth F. Klein, Joseph M. Fisher, and William C. Ramsey, Select Board of Hingham, do hereby proclaim August 12th, 2023, to be Hingham Farmers Market Day, and urge all citizens to take cognizance of this event and participate fittingly in its observance. Dated this first day of August, 2023. Signed, Elizabeth F. Klein Chair, Joseph M. Fisher, and William C. Ramsey.
I move to proclaim Saturday, August 12th, 2023, as Farmers Market Day in the Town of Hingham.
Second, roll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
And I'm in as well. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle, here's our rent check.
Very efficient.
Delivered in person.
Thank you.
Well played.
Do we have our Burtu cheese person? No, okay. All right, next on the agenda is the Public Safety Facility Project Update. See, we have--
I'll kick it off if you don't mind.
You want to kick us off? Okay, sure.
Excuse me. Michelle, can you contact the Burtu cheese?
Sharon already has. She's talking, she's contacting him and their supervisor. I'm not sure someone's going to be able to join us this evening.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry.
So just a couple of quick comments, and then we'll get into it. So the Public Safety Facility Project is moving right along. A lot of great progress. I like driving by it every day and seeing the yet-new progress. So we'll be in there, I think, before we know it. We did assemble our team here tonight. We have a number of folks from staff and from the committees and contracted companies, et cetera. So from the building committee tonight, we have Bob Garrity and Donna Smallwood here. Our staff, we have J.R. Frye and Chief Murphy. Chief Jones just had to step out to go meet with the DA downstairs, but they're here also to answer questions as needed. And from Hill International, our owners' project management team, we have Paul Callis and Matt Hennessy. Before we turn it over to Paul and Matt to walk us through the progress on site, I've asked Bob Garrity to give us an overview of the committee and their role and what they do. Bob?
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I assume you can hear me. Okay, I'm on vacation. I'm a case, so this is the first. This is our first project update meeting with the Select Board. I believe we'll probably be happy when the quarterly are as necessary as the project goes along. So congratulations, everybody. This is the first project meeting since the construction contract has been awarded. So as Paul indicated, the project team from the owners' project management team is Hill International. They're comprised, well, comprised of a lot of people, key people who are here tonight, who you'll be hearing from in a moment, that is Paul Callis and Matt Hennessy. Matt is the project engineer, who's the resident engineer, we typically call Matt. So he's there every day. The design team is KBA, and KBA's primary contact, primary architect of the project is Sean Schmager. So the construction contract was awarded to Colin Tonio several months ago. The contract amount is $39,483,840. Now the, a real quick overview of the construction, when the construction commenced and when it will likely be done. The construction contract started, starting for that project, for the contract, is May 15th, 2023. The substantial completion date is scheduled for January 14th, 2025. And the final completion date, so substantial completion is usually the date that you can, if you take over use not, you can see it be moved into the project. The final completion of the contract is scheduled for March 26th, 2025. Typically takes about 60 days, if you're lucky, to be able to close out a project after you take over substantial completion. Now, a couple of items on the construction work that has been underway for the last six weeks or so, or is currently completed or currently underway. The contractor, you know, with the assistance of the OPM and the architect, have secured the contract site. They're laying out all the work. The, it's been an installation of work trail, it's fencing, temporary utilities. The demolition of the wood building that had been on site for a number of years has been completed. It's no longer there. The demolition of the concrete slab and foundation wall is underway as we speak. As you'll probably recall, if you're familiar with the site, about, probably about 60% of the entire site is covered by a concrete slab that had a very large building on it for a, for a while, two days. So that slab has to be torn out, crushed up. They separate the steel rebar from the concrete for purposes of trucking it off the site. And there are also foundation walls that support the concrete slab. They go pretty deep, and they are also, the demolition expert that's did demolition work that's currently underway. We're, we've confirmed the utility connections. We need for the building on board. The installation of utilities is ongoing as we speak. The contractor and all their different subcontractors have been, are already well along in submitting shop drawings to the architect. Shop drawings are, is basically the contractor and their suppliers tell us what, well, tell the architect how they are going to perform the detailed work that's already spelled out in the design plans. So it really gets into the nuts and bolts of exactly what size everything's going to be, who the manufacturer's going to be, of just, you know, the hundreds, maybe even thousands of different pieces that they come together on a construction contract. So the contractor himself submit shop drawings to the architect. The architect reviews them all with their team, all the engineers, the architects on their staff, and they review it in accordance with what the construction contract required. And before anything gets installed, the architect has to approve the shop drawings that have been submitted by the contractor as being completely compatible with what the construction contract requires. The, we've established a procedure we thought the town will be following to review and approve payment applications from Colin Tonio to ensure that there'll be a timely payment process. Payment on construction contracts is, is a pretty, is a very important aspect of the project, particularly for the contractor. The whole area of payment is regulated by, by law. And that law is incorporated to our construction contract. If every payment to the general contractor, monthly pay, okay, general contractor bills us monthly. The town has to pay, or at least they're obliged to pay under the law. The contractor, fifteen days on periodic payment. So, that's, that's heightened any circumstances, let alone when you have a project. We have a building committee, they review the payment requests. We've got the designer, the OPM, town personnel, all have to review it before you can even get a warrant to put on. Where you folks and Tom, Mayo, have to basically go through the operations just to get a check cash. So, we think we've got a good, workable process in place. We'll find out soon, so you know, right now, we're processing the first payment. I understand from J.R., everything seems to be fine. And we're really hoping that we'll be able to meet all the requirements for periodic payments. Tom's office has been a big help in that regard. And hopefully, my committee won't delay anything. The way we set it up, we basically submit the payment request to, well, the payment request gets submitted as they call a pencil payment, a week from the contractor to the architect and the OPM, a week before the final payment actually gets submitted. The architect and the OPM review it. They go through every single item. These payment requisitions are forty-eight pages long. And every page is, is, has a different payment item in the contract. On top of that, we hope we withhold the retainage to make sure we have the overpayment contract, contract to have a bit. And it's a lot of work to put a payment together. The process again is the payment request. Requisition goes in pencil form. The architect and the OPM talk to the general contractor, not necessarily the subs, during a weekly period. Then the contractor finalizes each payment request, signs off on it. The architect and the OPM certify with the amount that the contractor requests by as provided by the owner and architect. They feel it's appropriate. They certify the amounts too, and then it goes through the process. And the town retains the statutory amount against each payment, so that we don't overpay anybody. The, let me see. Okay, wait, and besides the construction contract, there's also, there are also another number of aspects of this project that will make it whole at the end of the day. And we have to do work on those aspects of the project already, even though we're really just in the beginning of the construction phase. And what I'm talking about here is, there'll be fixtures, FF and E, fixtures, furnitures, and equipment. Those will all have to be procured during the course of the next twenty months, really. But to do that is a whole complicated process where the architect, the OPM, and the police and fire departments both sit down and hash out exactly what they're going to need. You know, whatever they can delay or whatever the situation will be. There's a whole process for procuring everything that gets put into the project. And the architect has already started that, well, they kick-started it again, the project, the process to sit down with the, the fire department, police department, to make sure that, you know, we've got, got everything right. And eventually, probably about a year down the road, or will be, or even less. But probably about six months to ten months down the road, we'll actually be going out and starting to procure different batches of furniture, furnitures and equipment. So, having said all that, I'd be happy to turn it over to either Paul Callis and Matt Hennessy. And you can take it from here.
Thanks, Bob. My name's Paul Callis. With me tonight is Matthew Hennessy. He's our project manager onsite. And we have a slideshow to present. And I'd like to, if we can screen share, we'll put that up. And Matt will lead us into the camera tour of what's been going on over the last couple of months.
Excellent.
So, Matt, why don't you take it?
Okay. Hello, room. My name is Matthew Hennessy. As everyone said, I'm the project manager on-site daily. And I just wanted to continue on what Bob had said. I want to go through some, some photographs, just, you know, to show you what's been done, the next actions, and photographs to give you a sense of, of the project. And so, stop me, anyone if you have any questions or concerns, or let me know. So, this is the construction update. So, as you know, mobilization is going on. The fencing, the construction fencing, and the scrim, which is the green netting, is also applied to the fencing. That's the entire perimeter. And that item, as well as the erosion pest control, these are items that are all part of the code, the building code for permitting in the town of Hingham, so they've been followed through a T. The erosion control, to those who don't know, could give you if you do, simply, you know, often water is on the site. And we don't want that water to escape the site. So, there is the netting around the perimeter and the interior of the fence with a silt sock, which is a green tube, which is, is absorbent, it helps absorb water. It just keeps all the water and, and any materials on-site. Pest control has been installed as well. It's around the perimeter as well to, you know, we have fresh market there. So, I'm wondering if we'll have anything from them, but we haven't so far. We just tested the pest control. The sub just came out and found that none of the tracks were filled. The removal of the soils, the top soil from the project was, was taken to the Hingham DPW soil storage facility successfully. It's all done. It's all there now. As Bob had said, the temporary electrical panel. I will say that that moved very smoothly. Often that's, you know, it's, it's a long, arduous process, but because the town was there and a part of this with, you know, electrical company, it went really smoothly. Very happy about that. Construction trails are in. They're being outfitted as we speak. And again, I, I put the aggregate stone for dry pad, and that is a, so you had, you, we took up the top soil and we took up much of the asphalt. And so, the aggregate is stone, so that, and you'll see in a later photograph, so that no water escapes the site, absorbs and goes down to the stone. So, removal of former onsite building and its foundation slab. We saw the photographs. We've been talking about that. That was the first big step. You know, the nice, it went smoothly and it's already been done. The foundation itself, everything has been demodded. And now, as, as Tom was saying, that, yeah, the slab is being removed. It's, as Bob said, it's like sixty percent. It's a lot. It's a lot of concrete. It was a, you know, military project site from the forties. Some of the, some of the footings were four foot by four foot by twelve foot. They were enormous. And so, yeah, a lot of concrete. It's, it's going well. It will continue to go on. And then lastly, tree protection has occurred. That's, that's an important factor. A lot of nice trees, permanent property, and other protected.
Great.
Next action. So, we'll continue the demolition of the slab, slab and the foundation walls, which are foundation walls, slabs, retaining walls, given the grade of the, the project, of the, of the, the land there. Continued crushing concrete debris for rebar separation. So, what happens is you have a lot, you know, these big pieces of concrete. When they are, when they are removed off-site, the concrete, the rebar has to be separated because they're changing, and the rebar is recycled. So, that's what's going on. It's this big crushing machine. It crushes it all out and picks the, the rebar pieces, and there's a lot of it. Excavation on north side to access core steam line. So, this is one of the next steps as well, where there's a lot of steam pipes, water pipes, and sewage pipes on the property. So, that and the line below it. They'll be, they'll be excavating the top layers and then hand digging around so there's no damage to the water and sewage. And I'm keeping an eye on that. It's a, it's a tough thing because a lot of the, a lot of the lines were not documented. That's not something that was done so much in the past, so carefully as we do today. So, there's a lot of, you know, unforeseen kind of steam line. Like, their, their locations are not known, so we have to do that carefully. And then also, that F that's done, the backfill of the former piping, of those trenches. And then after that, the big, the big step is the beginning, the footings and the, and the foundation process. And so, we're excited about that. And that is the next big phase for, for the project. Let me show you some photographs. So, this photograph captures four different phases. We have, we have the, the green fence. We have the black, still, black erosion control. We have the green silt sock, and we have the pest control there, the black box. And then we also have the, the tree protection. So, actually, it's five devices there. This is, as I was discussing, this is the Essington entrance and the aggregate there, so that no more, you know, when coming in here, it, it sinks down, through stone and out of the roads. You bring the dust to the section. The construction trailers, that's my trail. That's where I'll be. If you want to step online, you'll see I'm right there. This is the tent electrical station. And, and it is in between two trailers, and it's all done and it's been inspected by the town, which is, you know, good processes working out well. This is the site of the former building. And that's the, you know, the big pile of debris. Nice building, just a pile of garbage now. And so quickly. And then, and also, this is from a couple of weeks ago, two, a week ago, and the foundation now is already gone, so. And the asphalt as well. So, this is, this is an important process here. This is wetting soil to maintain dust control. As you know, with the, we have the winds off the water there. We have a lot of dirt. And then the areas where they didn't put the aggregate down because they can't, because it would be working, we spray. This is a water truck that just drives around the site and fills, it's filled from the, from the fire engine in the northwest corner. And it just drives around and sprays water to keep moist, so that the dust doesn't fly in the air. And this is showing a couple of different, it's, what you have here is you have the, the breaking up of the concrete blocks, you have the separation of the, of the rebar, and then you have the spraying to keep the dust down from the breaking of the, of the concrete. And this is jackhammer. So, they got a big old jackhammer, a three ninety there to, because it's really thick. It's eight-inch slab there, very hard, dense concrete, so they had to bring a lot of it to put in for that. And this is the dammion of the foundation. This is the dumpster. Just showing a picture of the dumpster of just the rebar that's been removed from the concrete and re-cycled. This is an important process. This is a gentleman from a company hired by Colantonio, Argoscope, and their contractors to document the project monthly. So, they, they are serviced. They come out. They walk around and photograph the entire site. They have a drone as well that captures the, you know, aerial shots. And so, it happens once a month to keep track of all the activity of the monthly process.
That's in addition to our daily photography that we do each and every day.
Exactly. So, I, right, so then, as, as those of you who have received my daily reports, I, I take photos every day and produce daily reports, and at the end, a weekly report. And I have photos in there and, 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 you know, kind of like describing what's in the photographs. This is a gentleman that's just, that, that keeps a, that's Colantonio, hired by Colantonio, Argoscope, to just document separately from what we do exactly, all that. And then also, wait, oh, there we are. There's the building. That's where we'll be, as, as Bob had said, in mid-twenty-five.
Let's, can I just make?
Sure, yes. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt. Just a couple of extra comments. I'll be brief. While we demoed this site and we look forward to building the new building, let's remind everybody that when we bought this property a few years ago for this purpose, we knew at the time that we would be able to utilize the site as was for a period of time until we started this work. And we, and we in fact did that, I think, pretty well. We, the police department used it on a regular basis for training exercises. The, we held COVID testing clinic onsite there, which was great. And at the, towards the end, when we were just about to demo it, Chief Murphy had his team over there and, and did some training in terms of how to, how to deal with a, a home fire. We didn't actually burn the building. It was too close to the, to the market. Didn't want to burn the market down. But we, well, you know, it's the least I could do. But we, we decided that it would be a good opportunity for, for the chief to bring, to get some training in on the site. I was, it was funny. I went over there at one point and the deputy and one of the captains were down, down below and they were, I see the guys up on the roof swinging the axes. And I said, "Well, who's up there?" And they said, "That's all the kids." It's giving them a chance to swing the axes and cut holes in roofs and do it on a, on a site that was about to be torn down. It was a perfect opportunity. So, it was a successful purchase. Obviously, it'll be great when we move into the building. But, yeah, we got, we got some pretty good use out of that site in the last few years, too.
I see what we called the COVID testing site.
Yeah.
And that was very helpful.
Absolutely. Two versions of it, I think, at one point, yeah.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Bob, and, and the committee, and Paul, and Matt, for bringing us through the update. And we look forward to many more updates. But a lot has, has certainly happened since May, so it's exciting to see. Do you, from your perspective, are we on target from a schedule and budget perspective?
Yes, we're, well, I'll, I'll, Bob, I'll.
No, you can talk about that.
Okay.
Yeah, as far as you know, right on your, your plan schedule and, and something's bound to come up, but so far, so good.
Excellent. And I know you, you talked, Bob, about the monthly invoice process. So, I'm assuming we're paying for work complete to date on a monthly basis? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, okay, excellent. The, I know the next big step is the footings and foundation process. What is the timing of that?
Well, okay, so that's going to take us into, into the new year. You know, depending on the weather, right, that, that often affects pours, but, you know, that's, that's where we are. It's something that's harder to predict, but, you know, often the times lost, then they can be made up somewhere else.
Sure.
Yes, construction is how it goes, but it appears, you know, I think it's in our own schedule.
Okay, excellent.
And our foundation should be before winter.
Before winter, okay.
Not sealed during the winter. It works all pretty well.
Okay, excellent, excellent. And have you heard any concerns from the Butters so far?
None.
Excellent. Good. That's good to hear. Thank you. Joe, do you have any questions?
No, really, just thank you for your oversight on the project. Looking forward to the ongoing reports. Thanks.
Excellent. Chief, did you want to add anything?
No, we're very happy to see.
Happy so far?
Construction, you know, ongoing, and obviously, it's a demolition period, but we're very happy to see the progress that's being made.
Excellent, excellent.
And just to keep you in the loop, we have weekly meetings. We actually had a meeting this afternoon. It's a combination of onsite and virtual. But, you know, the, all the, the project manager, the architects, the Colantonio are meeting on a regular basis to update on, you know, next steps and everything else.
Excellent.
Representatives from police and fire are attending these meetings, so we're kind of in the loop as well.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you. Any questions or comments from members of the public? I don't know if anybody's with us. Did you want to add anything else? Tom, Joe?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Excellent. Well, thank you all. We look forward to the next update.
Yes.
This is exciting. Thank you all for joining. Have a good vacation. Rest of your vacation, Bob. Thanks for joining us.
Bye, everybody.
Goodbye. Good night. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
All right, next on the agenda is FY24 Senior Means Tested Property Tax Exempt. All right, next on the agenda is FY twenty-four Senior Means Tested Property Tax Exemption Update and Outreach. And I know we have Erin Walsh and Joshua Ross with us. You can kick us off, Michelle?
Sure. Thank you, so as you said, we have Erin Walsh, our Director of Assessing, and Josh Ross, our new Chair of the Board of Assessors with us. We just wanted to update the select board on our outreach campaign for the Senior Means Tested Tax Exemption. Just as a reminder, this was a new property tax exemption that the town put in place a few years ago, it was created by annual town meeting in 2019. Town meeting this year actually extended the, the exemption indefinitely, which we really appreciate, so we're able to offer this exemption now going forward. This took special legislation that passed and it was initially good for three years, but we are now in our third year of implementation in FY twenty-four. And I will turn it over to Erin to walk through some of the specifics about who's eligible and who we're targeting in Hingham.
All right, so here are some of the eligibility requirements. So for the circuit breaker, you must be sixty-five or older, or a co-owner must be sixty or older by December thirty-first of 2022. You must have owned and occupied a residence in Hingham for at least ten consecutive years. The annual income for calendar year 2022 cannot exceed sixty-four thousand for singles, eighty thousand for head of household, and ninety-six thousand for married couples, which is up from last year's sixty-two, seventy-eight, and ninety-three. The assessed value cannot exceed nine hundred and twelve thousand, which last year was eight hundred and eighty-four thousand. The assets, they must not have excessive assets, which is determined by the Board of Assessors, and it's sort of determined, we didn't want to put a cap on it just to be sort of more flexible, and it's determined by the pool of applicants who apply. And the most important thing I would say is that you must have claimed the state circuit breaker tax credit on your income tax return for calendar year of 2022.
Before you turn the page, if you can just go back.
Sure.
Residency, must have owned and occupied a residence, is it the same residence or any residence?
Any residence in Hingham, yeah, as long as it's been ten years. So the benefit is it's tied to the mass state circuit breaker tax credit, so if you apply on your state taxes, on your state income tax return, and you claim the circuit breaker tax credit, you would be eligible for this benefit. And what we like to say in the office is, if you look at your state income tax return, look on line forty-four, if there's a dollar amount there, then you know that you would qualify for this. The maximum fiscal year twenty-four benefit is currently twelve hundred dollars, which is up from eleven seventy last year, which is set by the state. And then the Board of Assessors would present the total slate to the select board, who would then determine the exemption amount anywhere between fifty and a hundred percent of the amount set by the state. So applications are due to the Assessors' Office by September first of 2023, so a month from today. And if you are eligible, the credit will be applied to December of 2023's tax bill, so half would come off on your February first bill and half would come off on your May first bill. So I'm going to turn it over to Josh, who will talk about some participation.
Great, thank you. So the first year we did it was fiscal year 2022. We had received twenty-four applications, we approved twenty of them for a total exemption of twenty-two, two oh one, which was approved by the select board a hundred percent, so everyone who applied were approved, got that amount. This past year for fiscal year 2023, we saw a three hundred percent increase, which was amazing, to ninety-six applicants. Eighty-six were approved by the board for a total of eighty-eight thousand, three oh four, and again, which was a hundred percent, was approved by the select board. To date, we have forty applicants for fiscal year twenty-four, and ten of those were new, which is great. And this time last year, we only had twenty, so we are well ahead of the, the pace that we were last year. Erin and her team does a fabulous job reaching out, especially for the folks who applied last year and were approved to hopefully re-up their application. Now that they've done it once or twice, it should be a lot easier process.
Mm-hmm.
And also, they should feel confident in turning over their personal information to us. So this last number here, the, the target is based upon a, a number that was given to us a couple of years ago by the state on the number of eligible participants, like Erin said, who file for their state circuit breaker. So the number, the total number who applied from the state is somewhere in the four thirty's, but that includes renters, so this doesn't include renters in our number. So we estimate around three hundred and fifty potential. And that's, and another differentiator, differentiator between us and the state is the assets. So they may qualify for the state, but may not qualify for Hingham. So we're trying to reach these three hundred and fifty people. Like I said, we did a, a really big campaign last year, I know we presented it last year of everything we did, we're, we're looking to build on that this year. We'll talk about what we're, what we're doing in, in a little bit, but, you know, we're hoping to grow that number from ninety-six this year again to up well over a hundred. So some of the things that we have done is, like I said, we mailed the applications to the prior applicants and do follow-up phone calls, and that's from, you know, June and August of this year. If you received your tax bill, you would have received a flyer about the exemptions, because that was in this year's tax bill, which we switched from last year. We did the light bill, but this year, everyone seems to open their tax bill more maybe than their electric bill that some people just pay automatically and don't even, may not open them, so. We have flyers and posters at, around the town, library, the Center of Active Living, and that's ongoing, if you walk around this building, they're all over the place. Here's an example of a flyer on the right-hand side there, a nice QR code to scan and go right to the, to the site. The website and email blast was on July eleventh, there was a press release and a story in Anchor on July eleventh. And Jennifer at the Senior Center has been updating their newsletter, and if you walk in there, there's signage all over the place. And here's just some examples of, of what that looked like. And we are continuing to do Facebook posts, Harbor Media, I think is re-airing their PSA, we did some last year that worked out really well. I know it's played at the Center of Active Living, too, on the screens continuously. And that's done now, July through August. And tonight, we are presenting to you, and hopefully we get the word out a little bit more. We had scheduled a presentation like we did last year at the, the Center of Active Living, we didn't have a, really any turnout. So I think, you know, one of the things that we need to look at going forward is, we may have hit our mass sort of group, and now it may just be really getting into the nuts and bolts of it and going out and hitting the pavement and, you know, asking neighbors and asking a different demographic to be aware of this, so they can kind of put it out there as well. Either friends or relatives, may have parents in town. You know, I know in, you know, my neighborhood alone, there are probably three or four potentially folks who, who could benefit from this, and I know it's kind of a hard topic to, to approach with people, but we'll see where the numbers are this year, and, and we may have to kind of figure out our next steps for, for marketing and outreach, because I don't know if we're going to see another three hundred percent increase this year, but, so that's where we are with that.
Okay.
And then this last slide shows some of the other tax relief resources we have in the Assessors' Office. So if people come in and they don't qualify for the circuit breaker, we, the office will assist you to see if you qualify for any of these other exemptions. And one of the things worth noting is that if you do qualify for one of these and the circuit breaker, you can qualify for two, so it could be substantial relief for a lot of people. Another thing is number five on this list is our elderly and disabled taxation fund, which is funded by taxpayers' contributions. It has been inactive because the funds were depleted and we're reigniting it at this point. It's, there's information on the website, we've started the committee, we've met, and we have applications available to the public. And another thing worth noting as well is, at our last town meeting, the, an article was put forth to basically double a lot of these exemptions, so these used to be half what you're seeing here, so just the thousand dollars and three hundred and ninety dollars, and now we've been able to double those, so that's a great relief as well.
Excellent.
And then, yeah, if anybody has any questions at all, our office is always open, they, everybody's very, very knowledgeable, very friendly, and happy to assist.
Excellent, well, thank you. This has been a tremendous program, and the outreach and people you've been able to, to reach and, and receive this benefit has been phenomenal. I think I share your concern, Josh, about if we can reach all of the others and, and, you know, if that three hundred and fifty is, is really a realistic number or an accurate number, that certainly was an estimate, you know, based on kind of our initial demographic information, but I don't know if there's a way that we can hone in on that.
I know it's hard because all the information is so confidential, we just don't know who, and rightfully so, we don't know. So we're trying to figure out a way to, to do it. You know, we talk a lot in our meetings about, you know, we have a lot of generational folks in town, and so maybe it's time to, to reach the, you know, maybe the forty to fifty-five year olds who have parents, who still live and own in town.
Yeah.
Who may not even pay attention to this stuff because it's, you know, we talk about senior means or exemptions, to educate them a little bit and figure out how to educate them to talk to their parents or relatives or neighbors about this, and so, you know, that's something we may look at, figuring out what to do to hit those demographics next year.
Yeah, okay.
Other than that, without really getting, you know, we can figure out based upon assessments who would qualify, assessments and age, and some of the, the qualifiers, like we did with the mailing last year, which was really helpful, we thought maybe an every other year approach, because it was a lot of work to, to do that. But we can possibly look at, we can do some cross-referencing to see who we already mailed and if there's any new folks, or, you know, maybe hitting a demographic of, of the younger folks to get information out there, but we can, we, we'll take a look at that throughout the offseason.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think that's a great idea, especially because a lot of the information is online, so.
Right.
Have we thought about reaching out to the Houses of Worship in town to share the information?
Uh, I think we did that.
We might have.
Did we do that last year?
I don't remember. With the flyers, the Houses of Worship, and the food pantry, and maybe a few other places, but we can, we can make sure we get some resources there this year, too.
Right, that's a great idea.
Okay. And the income requirement, is that set by the state? It is, right, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
And just another thing that I'll, will mention is that the maximum credit is twelve hundred dollars, and that's set by the state as well, and so there are some folks, because it, it might be, um, there's a sliding scale depending on some factors and some percentages, so the town only, you can only get through Hingham what you got through the state. So there were some instances last year where, where the people didn't get the full twelve hundred, but they still got, you know, a few hundred here, a thousand here, but it's whatever the state, the max of the state is.
Got it.
So if you only got, say, nine hundred from the state, we can't give you the full eleven, your twelve hundred, so.
Yes, got it.
I just wanted to make a note of that, because if you look at the numbers, sometimes they, they won't add up.
Right, okay. Joe, do you have any questions?
Just a comment and praise, I think the, the communication, the outreach has been great, and putting it in their real estate tax bills is absolutely the way to go, people do open those, and you're right about the, the light bill, most people, it's just online, they don't even open the envelope.
Right.
So I think that's great. And, you know, one of the things that I think you've done that I don't think you've talked about is not, not necessarily the outreach, but the content of the outreach, making it more understandable, so that people do understand when they get the message that they can go through the process and that it works. So thank you for doing that, I think it's been a success.
We hope that is part of sort of the growth avenue, is that once people, the ninety-six people, well, eighty-six people who were approved.
Right.
Talk about it as much as they can with their friends to see that what it was a...
Yeah.
Yes, you do have to collect all your financial information, but once it's done, it was a pretty painless process, and it's good to get a twelve hundred dollar tax credit every year.
And the best thing people can really do is, is contact Erin and her team. If you look at this list, like, as she pointed out, the Senior Means Tested Tax Exemption can give you up to twelve hundred on top of something else on this list, we've doubled it through town meeting, we made a commitment to try to maximize these resources and spread the word when we put the override request forward in the spring, and now that that has passed and it's incorporated into people's bills, we just want to make sure that everyone knows that these resources are out there, and, like you guys said, her team is extremely knowledgeable, and you may not think you qualify for something, but they can kind of walk you through everything that's available and point people to the right resources.
Excellent.
And we are trying to, to figure out new programs as well.
Okay, great.
You know, we see some, uh, some applicants who, who are, who are here for a very long time, who are, are very senior, and so we want to try to figure out some way, something that, that we can do that's, you know, working with either the state or the town to, to say, if you, you've been here for sixty-five years and you're ninety years old, you're, you know.
You've paid your dues.
Your tax debt has been fulfilled.
Right.
But again, th- there's a lot of restrictions when it comes to the state.
Right.
With that stuff, so we are going down those avenues and seeing if there's anything else that we can, that we can propose or bring to town meeting or, or that sort of stuff, so, just like the, the tax, the new tax relief board.
Yes.
So.
Great, and I'm glad to hear that that's active. I think we have one more person who will point to that.
Great, yeah, I think you do.
I think there's an open seat, so. And can people donate? Do they need to do it via their tax bill, or how, how's the best way to donate to that fund?
We're still in process of figuring that out, but yes, they can definitely do it through the tax bill, and we're looking at different avenues to be able to donate.
Okay, great, excellent. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions or comments from members of the public? All right, well, thank you, thanks for coming, thanks for all your effort, and the next deadline is September first, right?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is...
Do Bertucci's?
I don't think he's here.
They can come, we can reschedule them, because she's not able to get anyone.
Okay, all right, so we will push the, the approval of the request of Bertucci's for a change of manager to our next meeting. We are also pushing the renewal of VFIS ANS Insurance Proposal and Claims Administration for Public Safety Officer Engraves on Duty to another meeting. Next on the agenda are appointments, I don't believe we have any this evening, we are still actively working on that, and we are still accepting talent bank applications if people are interested. Next on the agenda is public comment. Are there any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, seeing none, next are town administrator and select board reports. Sheldon, do you want to go first?
I have one. Tom and I wanted to congratulate our town accountant, Sue Nickerson, and her team for earning the GFOA's Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, this is for the FY twenty-two Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. This is the twenty-seventh year in a row that her team has earned this for the town, so, thank you, Sue, we appreciate it.
Excellent, congrats, thank you for sharing that. Tom?
Sure, just a couple of, um, one-day liquor licenses to report. So this past, since the last meeting, I've approved one-day liquor licenses for Barrel House Z for an event tonight at Sunset Picnic at Weir Farm, the Weir River Farm, Tuesday tonight, from seven to nine PM, and there was not a detail required. We're also, I also approved a one night for tomorrow, uh, one day for tomorrow night from six to eight PM, Hingham Maritime Center is holding their parent, their parent and adult participation night, again, a police detail was not required, and I've also approved... Brett, uh, I've also approved, and, uh, one day for, uh, Thursday, August seventeenth, for Break Rock Brewing LLC. Uh, again, Sunset, Sunset Picnics at Weir River Farm from five to nine. And again, no police detail was required. I also, just so everyone knows, I've, um, because of the rain, uh, the rain out for the, um, the summer sidewalk sales, uh, I've, I didn't bring it back to you, because you guys had already evaluated the, the program. But I've approved the new date of July, no, August nineteenth. Sorry, August nineteenth.
Perfect.
Great.
And that's, again, for anyone who knows, for, who wants to know, noon to five on August nineteenth.
Excellent.
Downtown.
Joe?
Yes, so I do have, uh, one item to report, uh, which is to recognize that yesterday, July thirty-first, in 2020, we closed on, uh, the acquisition of the water company, um, which was an incredible feat for the town, an acknowledgement of our persistence and a recognition of the vision that we wanted to own the water company. And it came to fruition, so this is third anniversary. Um, and I just want to give you a brief update. Um, the town had goals, and the reason why we, uh, acquired the water company, one was to deal with unaccounted-for water. Um, to give you an idea, in 2019, unaccounted water accounted for about twenty-four percent. In 2022, that was down to eighteen percent. So, that's a six percentage point reduction, but in actual, that's a twenty-five percent reduction, which is huge. Um, that's seventy-two million gallons of water saved. Um, we've had leak detection programs. We, the town has very, been very active. Um, rates have been stabilized. Uh, rates were increased on July first, 2021. There was no increase in 2022, no increase in 2023. Uh, our PFAS levels are well below the state, um, requirements. Uh, so, we've, we've got a lot to be proud of there. All three years, the town, uh, the, the water company has been within its budget. Um, the Citizens Advisory Board has been active, and it was formed with members for, from all three towns, uh, Hingham, Hall, and Cohasset. Uh, there really has been improved communications between the town departments and the water system. Um, the Mass DEP Drinking Water Awards, Drinking Water Awards were awarded in 2020 and 2022 to the Hingham, uh, to our water company, um, which was a real recognition. And the Mass DEP Operator Excellence Award in 2022 was awarded to Darren Durth. Uh, Liz and I were there to congratulate him. Um, he was proud, and we were proud. Um, and, um, it's a real recognition of the excellence of our team. Um, and it really is a team effort. Um, other highlights, um, uh, there's, there's so many things that have happened. Um, there's been over seventeen thousand linear feet of water main replaced, added or upgraded. Uh, thirty-six additional fire hydrants added to the system. Uh, there were eighty-nine inoperable fire hydrants that have been replaced. Uh, there's a new storage tank, um, designed for the strawberry, for Strawberry Hill and Hall. Um, there's a ten-year capital plan created and is being implemented. Uh, we've had filters, uh, new media, for, filter systems have been installed, and new media has been installed. We've had one centrifuge replaced with a new high-efficiency model, a second centrifuge ordered and expected to be delivered in late 2024. Um, contracts have been signed to replace the remaining three filter under drains. Um, we have new energy-efficient boilers that have been installed. Uh, customer service has really been through the roof. Um, the comments that I've personally received, uh, and I know that Russ has received, Liz, you've probably received, have just been stellar. So, uh, really, our congratulations to the team for making this happen, and we look forward to future successful years.
Excellent. Thank you, Joe, for sharing all of that. Um, certainly, we have a lot to be proud of, and the entire team, um, at Weir River Water System, under Russ Tierney's leadership, have, have done a tremendous job. Um, and it was, um, it's always interesting for me and rewarding to see the commitments that were made years ago with, with the vision of acquiring the water system, that, that we are meeting those. Um, mainly the capital improvements, the, the stabilization of the rates, as well as the quality of the water. So, um, there is certainly a lot to celebrate and, and be proud of. So, thank you. Um, I just want to reiterate, um, Keith German brought it up earlier, but tonight is National Night Out. Um, the Hingham Police Department is sponsoring out on the field behind Town Hall. Um, I believe the movie is Super Mario Brothers. I think there's probably still time to get over there. Um, and, and all are, are certainly welcome. Um, and that's it. Any, anything else?
Next meeting.
I will.
Next meeting is two weeks.
Yes, the next meeting is in two weeks, so August fifteenth.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
A second. Roll call vote. Joe?
Aight.
And I'm in, I as well. We are adjourned at seven-thirty-six PM. Thank you.